Good morning. It is Wednesday, June 7, 2023, and you are joining us for the Council Time Agenda. We have a Wednesday meeting, which is called Council Time, and it has kind of a special agenda because we have special items that we can talk about maybe in a little bit different way than at the council meeting per se. So this is all good. We will begin with public comment on agenda items only.
Chair, we don't have anybody here to comment this morning.
Really? Okay. Then let's turn to old business. How about minutes for May 24? Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed. And now we turn to item 2.2, Pride Month Proclamation. I would like to give just a little bit of background on this proclamation, having done some background work with Jessica Cole, who is the CEO and Chair, President, perhaps is her correct title, of PFLAG Southwest Washington. Last year, we had a Pride Month proclamation, and we worked with Jessica for a good resolution to having a Pride Month statement. I will say that in the end, only three of our councilors agreed to sign it. And so as Jessica and I were talking about the situation for this year, we said, let's see if we can maybe have a little bit different approach that accomplishes what we need to for PFLAG, but at the same time, has a more universal and, you know, appreciation from the community as a whole. And so, working on that, we have the proclamation that is before you, and it is very similar, actually, to last year's proclamation, although there are a couple of small differences. And I'd be happy to point those out if you wish. So are there any questions as we proceed with this?
Happy to add at least a comment. So one, my goal is always to get these proclamations published as easily as possible, efficiently, with the least amount of angst and effort on at least the main point of what we want to say. These proclamations are ours. They don't belong to the organizations that submit them. And so, from time to time, we have to transform the message a little bit to comport with what the council wants to say. Having said that, the other goal is to speed up the process, have a more timely process. And this is Pride Month. It is now the seventh of the month, and we've experienced this before where timeliness becomes secondary. And then I would, as an aside, I tried to stay quiet on the editing on most of these. I think every single one of us would write these in a different way, you know, wordsmithing. And I think that, one, it's really important to have all five sign these proclamations, but two, also that each individual councillor somewhat refrain from trying to put their own personal stamp on it and demand that it get written in their way, their own way. So having said that, I support this. I want it to happen. I would like to have published it last week, and I have, by email, at least agreed to whatever anyone else wants to do, so we can get it done with the least amount of controversy. You know, making this sausage in public on any proclamation is not necessarily beneficial to the proclamation process itself, and it detracts from the message we want to send. So, Madam Chair, I support this proclamation that you have on the screen right now. I'm hoping that we can have all five councilors agree to it today.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Medviji. And just as an aside, in speaking with Jessica Cole, she said that if it's presented to PFLAG on the 14th or the 20th, whenever that is, she would like to have representatives present as well, which I think is terrific. So I'll keep her apprised of what the dates on that will be, and as well when testimony can be given on it, should they wish to do that as well. Are there any other comments?
I have a quick comment, and I appreciate you working with Jessica Cole on this chair. It does seem like it's a bit of an awkward process that something from an organization gets submitted, and then if that back and forth could happen before it comes to the full council, that might be a good thing to do, because I'm assuming that the initial one that we looked at came from the organization, and it's what they originally drafted. Is that right? Right. Okay. But, and that, my main concern was that if we're going to change things, that we work with the organization so that they're agreeable to whatever those changes might be, just as a matter of respect. Thank you.
Are there other comments from council?
I would just say I would be supporting this.
Great. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So I feel pretty much the same, given that we've worked with the organization directly, and they're supportive of it. I'll be supportive of it as well.
Good to hear. So, given that, I hear three in favor of the proclamation. I'm number four, so in support of it. So, yes, go ahead.
I'm supportive of it as well.
Well, great. That makes it unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Belkot. So, given that, would this be on our agenda, Kathleen, for what upcoming date?
Normally, council presents these on a Tuesday meeting, and that next meeting is on the 20th. But that said, I think if the council desires, I don't think there's any issue if you want to do it next Wednesday at council time as well.
And I support the earlier we can do it, as long as a representative can, you know, comports with their calendar as well.
I concur completely, and I think that they will make that happen if they can. So I'll be in communication with Jessica today on the dates, once the council decides what they are. So shall we go with the 14th then? And that is the date that it would be presented to the organization, and they could receive it that day. Is that correct?
Sounds good.
Okay. I think we are set, and is there anything else on that we need to accomplish? Kathleen?
No, thank you. We'll get it ready for next Wednesday.
Very good. Thank you so much. Next is Public Safety Sales Tax, which was added on the 2nd of June, a little bit later, perhaps, than what some of our additions to the agenda come. But here it is. Staff?
Yes, okay. Yes, so I did briefly chat with councilors in 101s, and working with the finance team, and with Emily, who leads our budget process and actually is leading our mental health sales tax advisory team right now. With this new tax, as you recall, council has already directed certain funding to come out of that tax. One was driven by what was on the ballot title, which is body cameras. So we do have that set aside. And then two of our collective bargaining agreements with the Deputy Sheriff's Guild and Corrections Deputy Guild, the increase in their contracts have also been allocated to the Public Safety Sales Tax. There has been a six-year forecast already developed that was shared in the supplemental, and you, I believe you all might see that coming up in the next supplemental. I'm not sure, because I think that's more of the people piece. So we thought it might be helpful. There's a few departments that are like, hey, we need something, and can we tap into this funding? And so we're asking council to consider having another advisory committee, similar to mental health sales tax. The committee would be represented by a councillor, somebody from the county manager's office, the sheriff's office, jail services, the PA's office, district courts, peer court, juvenile, clerks, indigent defense, budget office, IT, and our finance team. So, I mean, there's a broad range. And then looking at similar, like I said, with the mental health sales tax, it would be reviewing submissions from departments on people who want to use that funding for a program or supporting their services in their department, have it be reviewed by the committee. And then the recommendations from that committee would come forward during the annual budget process, so that the full council can see that and make the determination and finalize the recommendation at that time. The reason why we're bringing it up today is our budget season has started, so we want to make sure that we're maximizing the time in the season. So this group, if approved, would actually start on this process in July. So Emily is on. I see Mark Gasway is on as well, if you have any questions or thoughts or feedback on this.
I have a question. I wish that I had counted the number of members, but I failed to do that. This seems like a very large committee. What are your thoughts on that?
It is large, but we want to be inclusive. And I know, you know, the intent when there was a vote was, you know, body cameras and supporting sheriff's office. The initial intent for Public Safety Sales Tax was for public safety. It's my understanding that narrow restriction has broadened, so it can be used for more than just public safety. And so, you know, it just, I agree, it's a lot. I'm hoping that the process will be streamlined in that it won't take a lot of time. There'll just be a few meetings of receiving proposals, reviewing them, and making the recommendation. But we do want to be inclusive, and one of the things, you know, during our budget process, something that I ask when I meet with departments if they're requesting IT items, I'm like, have you talked to IT? So we want to make sure that the right people are at the table, so that we're not inadvertently doing something without understanding the unintended consequences that it may have countywide.
All of that, go ahead, Counselor.
Thanks. So I support having as many stakeholders work together on this. I mean, it's going to be a finite resource. We know that. We don't know exactly what it'll come out to be, but like our sales tax, it should be reliable and sustainable. But, you know, since it's passed, we've, basically, the go-to response is, well, let's look at our mental health sales tax, let's look at our new Public Safety Sales Tax, whether it's the Children's Justice Center, our new public defender's office, our jail services, the Tria Center, you know, there's, it's going to be a finite resource. And so we need to use it as prudently as possible in a sustainable way. So I think having a large and maybe somewhat unwieldy group, I mean, it's just whoever's going to be leading it, bless you, whoever's going to be leading it will keep them focused. But I think having the broadest array of stakeholders would be value-added, especially in the very beginning of trying to figure out how best to use it.
I have just a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have heard from some of the small cities that there was a concern that this sales tax was not limited to, okay, we pay for the body cams, we pay for that program, and then, you know, the, I think their expectation would be, there wouldn't be a surplus of funds beyond the public safety scope of things. So I guess in terms of stakeholders, I think it would be good to communicate with the cities about, you know, what additional funds are there. I don't know. It just seemed like they were somewhat out of the loop initially, but I wasn't involved with that. It's just something that I've heard, and so I just wanted to express their sentiment.
So I do want to comment on that right away. So Battleground voted it down, and they didn't even want it. Nevertheless, they have it. I heard from recent councilors in Vancouver, hey, when do we have to opt in? They don't have to opt in. They get a 40% split. They're going to have their own individual budgets. Of course, it's going to be fairly greatly smaller, except for Vancouver. They should get a pretty healthy chunk. But to your point, I mean, obviously, especially for the smaller cities that aren't going to see a lot of this sales tax revenue, they may want to partner with us on broader programs, county-wide programs, and put better use to their money. But they, this is, they're going to get their own separate 40% revenue, they're going to have their own separate ways of spending it. And so I wouldn't want to add all the cities to the stakeholder meeting, but certainly we want to, especially if we see opportunities, hey, the center, here's how you can join with your smaller amount with all the other cities and the county in this initiative. You know, Vancouver and us split costs in many justice areas, including the juvenile justice area, so they're going to be a major player on some of their share and our share. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clarifying point. They do, they don't have to opt in, they're getting it, and I don't know what individual amounts each city will get, but obviously, it's proportional to the population.
Just to clarify a little bit more related to Battleground, is, I think their concern was they might have wanted to put forward their own sales tax and use it for roads. That was the specific need that they had, and this kind of usurped that opportunity. Well, you know, here we are, a couple years later, can't go back and change that, but just to say, this impacts the cities in some way.
Real quickly, I might add, a potential solution to that is that we could have, we could invite the cities to be non-voting members, to provide input and connection, communication, but they would be in charge of their own monies, you know, Clark County would be in charge of their own. The other thing I would say, too, is that I think we want to be, I think we want to be very careful to make sure that anything that we use these funds for has a very clear nexus to public safety. And, what's that?
Just in case I didn't say, it doesn't have to be. The only piece is the body cameras, because of the ballot title, because they did reduce that restriction in the law.
Yeah, and I just think in this transparency would be great to show exactly how, because I appreciate the community that they voted this tax in, and I want to make sure that they see how those funds are being used and how they're benefiting the community.
I would just say there, I think it was clear that it could be used for other purposes within the ballot, so I don't know that there needs to be a direct nexus, but, and I think the bulk of the funds, I think the understanding is the bulk of the funds would go to public safety.
Well, is there any further discussion from council? Or shall we give this the thumbs up?
One more question real quick, and Chair, I might ask you this, as well as Counselor Medviji, because both of you have been on the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board, and we do have two councilors on that one. Do you feel like it would be good to have two on this one, or just one?
I think it would be beneficial to have two, in that I've noticed that the two of us have different perspectives on the mental health sales tax, and that's good. So I think the same thing would be true here. For example, one councillor might be more in touch with the small cities, another councillor might be less in touch with them. So, I believe.
So I think two would be great. I want to have the county focus with the broadest stakeholders, and then have robust communication with the cities on opportunities we see. But I think we're going to have enough on our plate just to focus on, you know, our courts, our defense council, our jail, and, you know, we're going to have enough work to do. We want this committee to be really productive. So I just, I don't want to just flood the room with cities that may, you know, have their own agendas and their own budgets, and, anyway, that, just my thoughts. There are ways to communicate, even if, you know, the county manager goes to the mayor's meetings regularly, online, no?
That's only for mayors. I do meet with the city managers, though.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's different ways to communicate other than flooding our committee with city representation.
And maybe a possibility out of the discussion of this committee, if it found that this could be a service or a partnership from that committee, the council brings it back, who's representing, to the full council, and then we can communicate that out.
Kathleen, has there been discussion of who will chair this group?
No, but I would volunteer Emily.
I would second that.
And she's smiling, so I'm going to take that as she's agreeable.
Great.
Chair, this is.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah. I just want to make a clarification. The only organization that's bound to what was in the ballot measure is the county. The cities are not bound to anything that was part of the ballot measure. And although this is called Public Safety Sales Tax, that's an old name. Actually, the RCWs don't even recognize that name anymore. So the cities have the ability to use this very broadly. So I don't, I guess I don't understand the discussion about why the cities would even be included at all, because they have their own portion of this, and what we're trying to deal with is the county portion, right? And so I just want to make that clarification. They have, and as Counselor Medviji pointed out, they don't opt in, they get it, and they're getting it now. So they have the ability to self-determine what they want to use that. If Battleground wants to use it for roads, they can use it for roads. It's much broader than the title says, so.
Thank you. That's informative. I wasn't aware.
Yeah, thank you for that as well. So, yeah, I think we can, you know, it was an idea, but it probably would be best if we just move forward with just council on, or just county on this one.
Counselor Young, I just want to add one piece to that. As Counselor Medviji said, all of our law and justice stakeholders, the cities are represented already, because it's a countywide service, the courts, the defense, the prosecuting office. So just so you know that that's already kind of built into the decisions we make when we're making those decisions in the law and justice side. Just wanted to give you that, too.
And I take from that that Amber's accepted the nomination of the chair.
Emily.
Oh, was it Amber? Oh, I'm sorry.
We can have Amber be vice chair.
I thought you were reporting because you were named.
That's the second thing I was going to say. Definitely supportive of Emily, because she's, she does a fantastic job with the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board.
Really? Absolutely.
So which two councilors would like to join this team? And I will say, Counselor Belkot lost connectivity, so she'll be coming back, so she's not on right now, because she just lost internet.
I would volunteer, but I also want to bring up that maybe we should have kind of a mid-year review of all the committee assignments we have, and just see if there's any adjustments that anyone wants to make, because I would volunteer to shed some others if I'm placed on this one.
So when you're saying mid-year review, that's on council assignments, not on the actual boards and commissions, correct? Okay. If council wants it on the agenda, we can add the current list on the agenda to see if there's changes that you guys want to make.
Yeah, and since we have a mix of Counselor Medviji and myself on the other major committee dealing with the mental health sales tax, I would like to see two different councilors serve on this one, so that there's a little bit of greater diversity coming forward.
So I would say, I respect that idea, but I also think that maybe having one that serves on both would also be good, because it provides, well, you know what, Emily's on both, so she would bring that to the table. Never mind. Yeah.
So does council want to decide the two individuals today, or do you want us to bring back all the boards and assignments next week, and then you can determine if any changes want to be made? And it is anticipated that the committee will start meeting in mid-July.
So, I know we just said that.
Go ahead.
I know we just said two people that are not on it. I would be willing to be on it, but I'm okay going through and looking at all of them, whatever everybody else wants to do.
I think I'm fine just continuing the remainder of the year and looking at it at the end of the year as far as readjusting, because I know I can't take anymore, and I'm happy with what I've got.
So am I hearing that, so Chair Barman and Counselor Young are on mental health sales tax, correct?
Yes.
So Counselor Young?
I'm sorry, I was thinking that was Counselor Medviji.
So Counselor Medviji, you're not on mental health sales tax, so are you willing to be on the Public Safety Sales Tax group?
I would like to be on the Public Safety Sales Tax Committee.
Okay. And then Counselor Marshall, you don't have capacity. Okay. So we, I can follow up, or we can next week at council time, or even later today, when Counselor Belkot comes on to see if she has the capacity and the willingness to be on this committee. But at least we have Counselor Medviji right now. So thank you.
Madam Chair, I think you're muted again. We can't hear you.
Chair Barman, you're muted.
Thank you. So that takes care of item 2.3. Let's take a look at item 3, which is new business. Is there any?
None today.
Okay. Counselor reports.
I have a couple of reports.
Go ahead.
I wanted to follow up. Some weeks ago, I brought up the issue of mobile home parks and the concern about them being bought, and rates being increased and forcing people out. Well, Counselor Young and I had the opportunity to meet with the treasurer, Alicia Topper, who connected us with Northwest Cooperative Development Center, which is a national organization, but they operate very much in Washington State. And they have the ability to work with mobile homeowners to set up cooperatives, so that they're able to purchase the land, and they've been very successful. So I think we may be on to something that could, that could pan out. We've also included the Vancouver Housing Authority and may bring in a couple other folks to look at how we can be, move forward with this. So I think there'll be opportunities. There's 9,000 mobile home and manufactured homes in Clark County, so it's really kind of the last affordable housing that we have, so. So I'm excited about that, and I appreciate the involvement of Counselor. So I'm excited about that, and I appreciate the involvement of councillor Young. So I'll keep you posted. I don't know what this, what we might be, if we need to ask for anything, but I think we've got a little bit of momentum, and we'll carry that forward.
Very good.
Chair, I have one item to discuss.
Go ahead, councillor Young.
A few weeks ago, I reported on CDM, which they are an organisation that works and with seniors, gives them a place to come together, communicate, have social interactions with each other, and they also have in-home services for them as well, among many other things, I'm sure. But they have reached out to us and invited one of us, or multiple of us, I don't think there's, they specified one, but they were hoping that a council member would be willing to come to their meeting and deliver senior hero awards that they give out. And on the screen, thank you, Kristin, is their invitation, you could go ahead and read it, I don't know if all of councils received this or not, but it is during our council time meeting, correct, in July? So the question is, first of all, are we supportive of signing these senior hero award letters that they award? That would be the first question. And the second would be if it's, if one of us should not attend our council time and attend a meeting and, you know, hand out the awards or take part in that process.
What is the date in July? Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm certainly, you can see my signature there on that last one. I'm certainly in favour of it, and in favour of, you know, from time to time, a councillor doing an alternate duty by doing a presentation. I mean, I think I had asked Kristin to look at my calendar and then saw the conflict, and I didn't pursue it further, but I think it would be great if we did support these awards, and then we did have a councillor present.
I would agree. I think I did the same thing. I looked at it and saw the conflict and didn't follow up. So I appreciate councillor Young bringing this up, and I would support that as well. Councillor Young, would you like to present the awards?
Sure. We'll just make sure nothing important's on the agenda that day. I'd be happy to.
Well, that depends.
So I think it's the chair, a chair's decision, and whether you wanted to do it as a representative, as the chair, or you wanted graciously accept.
And I'm literally okay either way, so I'm happy to do it.
Presenting it would be just fine, and it may not take the whole meeting of council, so you can join us when your duties there have concluded. And I would like to see all of us have the opportunity to sign this document.
Great, thank you. I'd be happy to do it.
So that is councillor reports. Is there another? How about work session requests?
There is one work session request. This is regarding the draft Vancouver Lake Management Plan. As a reminder, there was an RFP process, and Herrera Environmental Consultants were hired to prepare the Vancouver Lake Management Plan beginning in May of 2022, and then that concluded in June of 2023, which is in alignment with the funding received from the state. I believe it's $150,000. Part of the contract is for Herrera to hold a public meeting to present the draft plan and solicit additional feedback from the community. So this work session request would look a little different, and I would recommend that we open it up for public testimony, as that's part of the public participation for the work sessions. So it's for presenting it directly to the council and receiving public feedback.
And to that end, I would anticipate, for instance, Friends of Lake Vancouver may want more than three minutes, and I think we should discuss some parameters for that, because I certainly want them to have a premier role in this presentation. I'd also add, we had our RTC meeting last night, and a representative from our third congressional district was there. And we, after the meeting, we discussed Lake Vancouver Management Plan. So their, that office is starting to take a greater interest as well. So I'm hoping that they get a particular invite to at least attend and watch.
And I have not attended these meetings. A public works staff member has been continuing with them. Were all those, I assume the stakeholders were included in those discussions, like the Friends of Vancouver Lake and other stakeholders? Is that correct? Do we know? Because if we're going to, I would just recommend that, you know, the consultant's speaking on behalf of that process. And if we're, if they were part of that process, we need to look at, do we open that additional time for everybody who is at the table? Or do we have the consultant speak on behalf of that group in the totality? Just something to think about.
I appreciate that. You know, I would, I would, I would support having Friends of Vancouver Lake have a seat at the table and be part of the presentation. And they've dedicated a whole lot to focusing on the cleanup of the lake, and I think their perspective may totally align, or they may have a little bit different perspective, or they may have additional information they'd want to share with us, but I would welcome all of that. And then additionally, I know, you know, ecology has a role in water cleanup, and there's whole regulatory overlays. And I, you know, I know there's been a lot of work done focused on the East Fork and I just wonder where that's at in terms of the whole regulatory structure, which I think ought to be responsible for cleaning up the lake.
I agree with that completely, and same thing, I think that Friends of, Friends of Vancouver Lake should be at the table. I would also encourage reaching out to them as well as Herrera and asking any other specific stakeholders, like we mentioned ecology. To me, the more people that we can bring in, and I don't know if maybe this should be a second workshop, maybe, where we bring everybody in together, and we, this first workshop is Herrera only? I don't know if, how we think, I'm supportive of them being here through the whole entire process, and nobody knows this situation better than them, for sure. But there's also other players, such as ecology, and I think it would be worth it to reach out and ask if they think we should invite anybody else to be there.
So I think we do need to take this in chunks that are manageable, and just kind of segue some random thoughts. Number one, you know, I've been keeping the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board engaged, and they want to be engaged on the watershed issue. By the way, as a councillor report, we did just give another grant to the estuary for the rich field pits from Lower Columbia Fish Recovery for about $200,000. So, but that's a more complicated process, and that this present consultant really didn't focus on the watershed or issues beyond the lake itself. I absolutely agree, and that was part of the conversation I had with the representative from the third district as well. You know, there are, the watershed is an issue that's equal. And I'm hoping that the next contract, the next work, the next pilot programmes, whatever comes out of this lake management, will start to really focus on DNR and ecology and fish and wildlife, the estuary, you know, get all the partnerships to start working on the watershed as well. So I think maybe for this first meeting, we shouldn't try to evolve, to try to jam that in right now, but just focus on what the consultant has done. And I would encourage every councillor, if you haven't done it yet, to go with the Friends of Lake Vancouver for a lake tour. And again, the representative, if not the congresswoman herself, is going to take that tour shortly. It's informative, no matter how much you think you know about the lake, getting a tour from them will be very beneficial.
And before we even start with this process, councillor Medvee was the leader in getting the groups together, and ecology and DNR were in those discussions, because they do both have authority over certain parts of the lake. And while I think they've been good partners in discussions, they did not want to take any ownership of this process at all. And even though this isn't like a county process, we found a way to help lead that charge under councillor Medvee. So it's, there is a lot of parts to it, and the reason why it's the draft Vancouver Lake Management Plan is that was what was identified in legislative, so we could not expand beyond that at that time. So I actually would agree, because there's a lot of pieces to this, and this is like step one. So I would encourage or advise council to consider only allowing that presentation for that focus group that's contractually required, and then we can take that information, and council can decide, okay, what's now step two? Is that, are we at the point of bringing in ecology, the Corps of Engineers, DNR, or, you know, what is, or bring in Vancouver Lake to get their perspective, and then figure out the next step? But this is really just trying to, I'm not going to say close out, maybe it is closing out this step, but it's getting that foundation so that we can move forward.
I appreciate you reining us in, but, you know, I think it is worthwhile to look at water quality broadly and looking at more of a watershed-based approach. And I'd just like to point out, we do have a Clean Water Commission, and I think they might want to engage in some of these discussions down the line when we look at it more broadly.
Just adds a little bit to what Kathleen said. I mean, no one has the capacity for this individually, and that was the trouble with spending that first year, Mark. You know, and DNR's all in, ecology's all in, but they don't want the lead, because they don't have the capacity for it. You know, I was somewhat disappointed that the city didn't participate more, that the Port Vancouver didn't participate more. I mean, we have some reluctant partners, and it's all because capacity and the enormity of the watershed, and the enormity of, hey, do we have to redredge the lake? Do we need to rebuild the flushing channel? You know, Corps of Engineer-wide projects, and that was the main focus of my discussion with our congresswoman aide. So, I mean, we do need to take this one chunk at a time. And so I'm very grateful for our South West Washington delegation for having gotten this money into the last budget and extending it so that we can actually use it, and then the additional money that was just budgeted, as well as the county manager stepping up and into the fray and helping this move forward. At all times, the Friends of Lake Vancouver wanted to take the lead and do it as a private entity, and quite frankly, they've been a driving force, they've got a lot of capacity, they've done a lot of research, they know this lake better than anyone. And so maybe leave it up to the consultant, how we work this out as far as presentations, you know, maybe Friends of Lake Vancouver do a portion of the consultant's participation. Or maybe the Friends of Lake Vancouver would be happy to just sit there and listen to the presentation by the consultant. I would just give you one other point. You know, when I first looked at the draft that the consultant came back with, I would say, hey, this was too narrowly focused, they didn't focus on what I was hoping they would focus on. There were some asthma checks, that's when I got the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board Director involved. So, I mean, this, the more people that give their thought processes into this and just keep this moving forward with the goal of a lake management plan actually working and getting some work done, not just studying, you know, I think we're on the right path, so.
Just real quick question. So, you know, from my understanding and what you just said as well, the problem is finding capacity, people, you know, organisations with capacity to get things done. We have individuals from the community that are non-commissioned essentially, that are willing to do so. So how can we take advantage of those individuals that are willing to take this project on? I know that we have to take the lead in this, but how do we involve them in such a way when they're willing to do so that can keep us moving, keep productivity going?
They are engaged, and they've been working with the consultant, they've had a seat at the table, and I don't, I didn't see the county manager grimace when you say the county had the lead. But, you know, that's what the lake management plan is about, having all the stakeholders play their role, exercise their jurisdiction as much as they can, and bring their resources to the table. They are engaged. I mean, maybe, I don't, I haven't had a recent discussion with them, I don't know if they're dissatisfied.
So I can't, I can't speak for them directly, but the conversations that I've had, they feel, it seems to be that they feel kind of in the dark on what's happening. So I think just an extra level of communication would be helpful.
Yeah, so we hear that from everybody, including all the city councillors, too. So it won't be in the dark if they participate in this meeting.
And I know at the beginning of this part of our discussion was, can we use them and have the funding go to them? But the funding was specific to Clark County, and so it was a little, and then there, I think there may have been a potential conflict of interest in some area. And they're, they are focused on solutions, I believe, but we have to like start somewhere officially first, because, so that we're not, you know, okay, let's do this solution, but that only fixes one part, that's looking at the totality of the issue and that plan. So, but I'll follow up with staff, too, that have been attending the meetings, just to confirm when that they're there, because I do know that there has been a lot of engagement, and we will certainly make sure that they're invited to the work session.
And that work session will be held approximately when, Kathleen?
Well, they're, they have a desired date of June 21. Everybody puts their desired date, but we're going to look at the calendar, because I think we already have two work sessions on that day, so we will look at it to see within the next month when that works. But it'll be, it'll be soon, we just don't want to keep council here.
If three work sessions in one day is a bit much.
Yes, I would agree. And I believe one of those is indigent defence. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you all, very, very good and informative discussion. Policy issues.
So Chair, just really quick, I just want to summarise to make sure I'm not missing. We're just going to have the consultant present at this phase. I will ask about the involvement of all parties, so that, and make sure that that's included in their presentation, and I can ask him as well, or have staff ask him, do you have a recommendation of somebody else joining you during the presentation? And then based on that presentation, then we'll do follow-up work sessions. Does that work?
Sounds good.
Chair, before we move on, I just had one suggestion as far as the work session, although it sounds like we have an abundance of work sessions. But one of my positions I serve on is Visit Vancouver, and they've just developed their 10-year strategic plan for tourism in Clark County. And they would be happy, Cliff Myers, who's the CEO and President, to give a presentation to the council. And I would just note that tourism is a significant part of our economy, and it brings in 5 million visitors from outside into Clark County, generates $95.7 million in federal and state tax revenue, and a half a billion to the economic impact in Clark County. So I think maybe at 20 minutes, just do an overview of what they have, what their vision is for the next 10 years, might, if the council is interested, Cliff Myers would be happy to do that.
I think that would be excellent. Their programmes are always forward-looking and very creative, so that's a good thing to do. Maybe looking toward July? And like you said, a short presentation in the 20-minute range?
That sounds good.
And Madam Chair, I have an alibi that Sue Marshall's comment just kind of, it was completely unrelated, but it just reminded me of, and I know Michelle was at the RTC last night, I just think the. I just think the public would want to hear this. As, so I'll couch it in terms of a councillor report. I chair the RTC and we had a meeting last night. I think, I'm not sure you were able to attend last night, but Michelle was there. Here's the, one of the takeaways that I wanted to alert the public to. You know, the Governor of Oregon has really put a wedge and taken, taken a knee on tolling, you know, and by executive order, pretty much brought a grinding halt to tolling, not only on the I-5 Bridge in advance of construction, which was pretty much objected to by every Southwest Washington constituent, but also tolling in general across different Oregon corridors. What came out at the RTC, however, is that, and I'll just couch it in terms of the committee work, the staffing work, the bureaucracies are moving full steam ahead. So what the message we heard last night is even though the political leadership said take a knee, we're going to suspend these two tolling movements, all the staffers who are working on tolling are still moving forward. So I thought that was very concerning. I thought it was not necessarily following the Governor of Oregon's lead, but nevertheless, that is occurring. Thank you.
Real quick clarification. I was under the impression, but I very well could be wrong, that the Governor had stopped the congestion mitigation tolling, but not the I-5 Bridge tolling. Am I incorrect on that?
Yeah, I think it is both, that the decision was made, because the discussion evolved into, we're, we're not only going to collect tolls, but we're going to collect them in advance of the construction of the new bridge. That was also stayed essentially. And Michelle, did you have a different recollection of the meeting last night or any comments?
No, so clearly from WashDOT, she, she, she brought that up. So both WashDOT and ODOT are still moving forward, which I thought was interesting. Like you mentioned, Council Mevige, the, if the governor's halting things, why are the staffers continuing to? So it's like not aligning with what the governor put forward. So they're still spending time, which is money, for staff to be working on this. And it seems very mixed message to me.
It, it is mixed message. And I also think that it is a mixed position that is intolerable with what it, what is the position of Oregon or of Washington when our top leader says one thing and our staff says another. That is not a good, a good drawing board for the future.
Yeah, and I know that ODOT was at a meeting, I believe, was it last, end of last week or the beginning of this week, that the Columbian facilitated at the library? And it was mentioned that this, this project, the I-5 Bridge project, will not go forward without light rail. Which is another contention issue.
Were you going to go over policy lists?
Yes. And before we move on to the policy items, I just want to make sure I did hear two yeses for the 20-minute work session on the tourism piece. I want to make sure we have three councils, councillors that support that.
All supported.
Thank you.
Well.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, because I very briefly talked to Council Marshall about this this morning, and maybe it's an appropriate time to bring it up under either policy issues or work session requests. From, from time to time, I've popped up and starting with the end of the last session of the council, of pursuing a conservation easement, if you will, on existing farms, using our legacy land funds. You know, in the context of last December, I brought it up, hoping that we could do that, at least for Heritage Farm, and take a step forward. Because that would be at least cost, because we own it. We could, it's just the administrative costs of putting that overlay on it. So I brought it up from time to time. I don't know if we, what our priorities are right now with our legacy lands, our Conservation Futures Fund. The last I had viewed it was when we were working on Cedars and we had about six priorities on our list. I'm wondering what that list is today. And so I'm wondering if we could have a work session on what our fund balances are, what our priorities are, and then maybe incorporate a discussion. Because I have heard from staff that, yes, they have considered a conservation easement to protect farmland, if a property owner was willing to do that. But I've never heard any, any forward progress or any concrete steps to actually put it in place anywhere. We do have conservation easements in effect in different locations around the county for different purposes, usually for egress or ingress on parks and trails and things like that. But anyway, so I'm proposing that we do at some point address that issue with the focus being on, can we do this? Do we have the money to do it? What would it look like? What would our partners be out in the foreign community to identify potential properties and what that program would look like?
And I can say on that particular one, Leslie, just confirm, Legal is looking into that. And the person who's reviewing it is along with the county. So Leslie will follow up with her staff and then bring that back and then we'll add that to that discussion if council wants to talk about priorities.
So this, I know it's, I don't know if it's done in other counties. I do know it's done in other states. And so I guess I would ask Legal, what is your timeline? When will you give us an answer so staff can either work on it or not?
I'll have to check with the staff that will be working on this to see their availability. But knowing that it's a priority, you know, we can, I'll talk with the county manager in terms of timing and, and we'll get on that.
So maybe one possible way forward is let's schedule a work session. That would be forcing the issue and then maybe the legal department would then set their timeline for getting a product to staff.
Were, were we going to have a, was it, I remember you talked to us, were we going to have a workshop about that?
No, I'm going to go, I'm going to go over the list here when we're done.
Oh, okay.
Counselor reports, yes.
Okay, so that's today that you're going over that list? Okay, thanks.
And I'll add this one to that list.
I, I would, I would support that. And I know this is languished. It's been, money was set aside, it's been on the priority list, but it really has just languished. And the last I had heard, they were actually working with at least one farmer and kind of maybe had their eye on, and some other farms. But it would be good to, I think this is, conservation easement is one of the very best tools we have. So, support that work session.
Third.
Okay, thank you. So at the work session, we will talk about the legalities. Yes, we can do this, or if there's any parameters around that review. A list of the current projects that are tied to conservation, future funding, and the current priorities. And then council then can determine if, and I'll also ask, and where are we at in, in those so that we don't stop something that we're almost done? Just so that you have full transparency. Chair, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Hello, hello.
Okay.
So, I think that's a very good summary and very comprehensive. So.
Are you ready for, I can start on the policy items, if you'd like?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I was still working on this this morning, which is why it's not posted. But this is a living document. It's, I have a couple of questions on direction from council. And then as we move forward with hiring a policy analyst, I'll be sharing this with them. I'm hoping this is going to be looking different. My goals is it'll look a little different in the future, rather than just the list, which is like a really good dashboard that is readily accessible for council to address. So I'm just going to go through these. Some of them are quick, but just want to provide an update. So the Heritage Farm, the business plan, they are creating the final report right now and there will be a work session in early August. So the request for the work session should be coming within the next couple of weeks, but the work session will be in August. The Molten Falls and the Handwick Trail, just an update on that. The deed package was signed by the county in late April. It's now with the Commissioner of Public Lands for signature. Once that is done, then it goes to the Governor's Office for Signature and then it's recorded. The state has not provided any timeline on that process, but we will keep you updated. Vancouver Lake, we've already talked about that. We'll do the work session. The Safe Park discussion, so the last time that council met, the path forward was pros and cons from Vanessa and Michael of Safe Parks and also understanding of the City of Vancouver's funding model. Vanessa and Michael got their stuff done within two days of that discussion. I'll be forwarding that to council soon. We just had the discussion, what, two weeks ago, with the City of Vancouver on their funding model. So this will be coming back to council for your discussion on the 21st or the 28th. The reason I don't have the specific date is I'm trying to manage what's going to be on each agenda so I don't overload one versus another. During the, okay, so ECHO meeting, just wanted to say the document recording fees were discussed on May 9. These meetings are on CVTV, so anybody in the public or others can watch. I know it was a bit of a late request to the cities to attend. A lot of those cities do attend ECHO. And then all agenda items and meetings are on our website. And of course, Council Mevige and Council Belkot are the council representatives there. So if there's anything that rises to the level of council knowing, they will bring that back during their council reports.
I, I have just a question on that. It wasn't clear to me what, what the cities really were looking for besides just where the money is going and how much is being allocated. Do they have desires to develop plans for each of their jurisdictions? It's, I'm not sure where that stands. It seems it was kind of.
Yeah, that question, I've mentioned it to a couple of cities, that they have the ability to do their own homeless action plan from the city managers. They were not necessarily interested, but of course, that's a council decision if they want to move forward. The only dialogue that happened on the May 9 is I had, I'd asked on a sidebar with Vanessa if the cities have to have a minimum population to have their own homeless action plan. And so she did say no, and she shared that with everybody who was at that meeting, that there is no minimum requirement for a homeless action plan. But there was no discussion nor asking of other jurisdictions if that is what their desire is.
Right. I guess my concern is, I, I do believe there are homeless people out in rural and other areas and, and there are homeless children that I think become separated from their parents to, so that they can stay in their communities and stay in their school and live with other families. I would not, I would, I would want local resources as much as possible for those families so that people, the parents aren't like kind of forced to go into Vancouver because that's where all the services are. So I think if there is a model that is dispersed throughout the community for whatever level of services might be needed, I don't know that we have a clear understanding of what those needs are and what, what the services might be needed to address them. I think through the school districts, you'd get a better idea of how many homeless children there are.
I, I want to add to that because, number one, the county is doing that. The homeless services that we're providing address homeless where they are. And so we do have countywide services. We are aware of what the issues are in the schools. And as to the homeless action plan, here's the friction point. You know, the cities want, and focus on the document recording fees. You know, hey, we want to know where this money is going and we want to know that it's going to help our local homeless. And so it gets back to the point where, well, this is really regional. It's not border incorporated, unincorporated. You know, the services that are provided generally apply throughout the county. The homeless action plan is a lot of work. It takes a lot of overhead. Our staff is expert at it and I think doing a great job. If you look at the annual publications of the services that are provided by the county with partnerships, the, the only city that would really be in a position to have their own homeless action plan is really Vancouver, that has the resources to do it. And I, I'm not going to speak for Eric Holmes, but, but pretty much any meeting he's at, he's pretty much said, we do not want to have our homeless action plan. The county is doing a good job at it. So, I mean, there's, what's coming up in ECHO is hopefully a lengthy educational discussion with our staff and the cities on how the homeless action plan is created. You know, the council for the homeless is the centerpiece of that effort. How do the cities participate? How do they get their concerns into the homeless action plan? So that's what our goal is with that ECHO presentation, kind of going through the timeline of the homeless action plan, how it's created, all the moving pieces. And most importantly, to all the city participants, how do you plug into that process to make sure the individual city concerns are addressed? So, I mean, it's an intractable problem and one that I'm hoping that, you know, the City of Vancouver knows that they have more of a need for RV parking, they have more of a need for safe, safe stays. And, you know, they're way behind on their Esther Park plan and they're getting a lot of pushback right now on their most recently identified location. I'm hoping the county can find a location ourselves. And, and I know this is really hard and it's, it's, the hardest thing is finding the right provider to actually run one of these locations. My focus would be slightly different than the cities. My focus is on treatment, whether it's mental health, vocational training, drug addiction. I don't want our RV parking or stays safe if we create it in the county. I, I don't want people staying there. I want them exited. For each person, name tag management, what does each person need to exit this homeless situation? Because we'll never get on top of this if we don't exit people and we just provide places for them to stay as long as they want to or as long as they need to, without putting in their own effort in ameliorating their own situation. So I, I want to broaden this discussion to that end. That's, I've been asking, I asked Amber, the manager, I want, where are all our properties? And evidently, we have hundreds of them. And certainly, probably all of them are not ideal. But we need some visibility and I'd like to have it. I mean, it's an executive function, but I'd like to know where all our properties are on GIS and take a broader view of, do we have a possible location where we could partner with our cities, not just Vancouver, and working for solutions? I mean, I would envision, and I'm sorry to get on a soapbox here, but just having talked to Habitat for Humanity, they could be a good partner. I would like to find a location where we can have a mixed use from, from congregate setting, like a tent, to pallet. setting, like a tent, to pallets, to maybe something that can be created, like a group home by Habitat for Humanity. I mean, I'd like to have a mix availability, so we can get every single person off the streets. That's my goal. So I'm hoping we can pursue that in some manner, on some level. And I know it'll take a lot, and we may have some ARPA funds that we could refocus on an effort like that in the short term. Anyway, I did want to comment on the question that you had.
Again, the discussion on Safe Parks and all of that will be coming at the end of this month for further discussion. The countywide affordable housing tax proposition, this was similar to the city of Vancouver's Proposition 3. I know the council previously discussed this. The prior council did, and did not opt for this funding. We did, the council did opt in the 1406. About this type of funding, and so I wanted to just ask council's direction, is this something that you're interested in pursuing? And if so, then we'll take it back and then add it to an agenda either next week or the following week to talk about what that looks like. We do have approximate dollar amount, what the process would be, what it would have to be spent on, and all that. But I just want to make sure that this isn't lingering, if we have a majority of the council who's supportive of revisiting this.
My, my thought on that is, I don't particularly want to be moving forward on that right now until we have a good plan. So, you know, when we sit down and we have these discussions about what we need to achieve, what we need to get done in terms of affordable housing and homelessness, that will be part of the discussion, is whether we look to move forward with that or not. Those are my thoughts.
Do we not have a, we don't have a plan?
Well, we have the homeless action plan, but I think from a policy perspective, we don't...
So my thoughts are kind of in agreement with Glenn. I think we have a lot of tools. We have an affordable housing option plan that's still in, moving forward. We, our vote last night, hopefully will increase some middle housing in the 179. So I think it's premature to start talking about additional taxes when we already have lots of tools to work with. Anyway, so I, I'm not in favor of adding any additional taxes without consent of the public. I, I, I think it's premature to put it on a, on a ballot.
And I concur with Glenn's comments as well. And there may be a time and place for this discussion, as it was discussed a couple, three years ago, that that might be the case. And if we say that same thing now, I would still say that might be something for the future, but not for now.
I guess my concern would be, when, when do we have a plan? Because if three years we talked about it, and I remember at that time, there wasn't a plan, we don't know how we would spend it. Certainly, the need is acute, and I would suggest we accelerate really identifying where are the gaps, what is the timeline? I mean, if we, we may have a number of tools, but what is the timeline for bringing those tools into, into place? I just don't want to see us sitting here three years later with, with the problem even, even worse, and, and really not having a plan. I think we need to accelerate identifying the gaps and what the plan is to fill those gaps. The housing option study is slowly unveiling, and, you know, it still remains to be seen we can, you know, what, what affordable, what affordable housing will, will be a result of that. We'll have more housing, but whether or not it's affordable, really a huge question.
My only additional comment is, not every challenge that we have in the county is solvable by taxing our public more. I, that, that's what I was trying to say. We have so many tools, we can make some good decisions to make efficient use of the resources we have to exit people from their situation, and to bring, you know, everyone agrees, if we had more inventory of houses of all different, at, all different price points, we would have more affordable housing. The scarcity of readily available homes drives up rents. It drives up the cost of properties as buyers are competing to buy them. I, I, just not in favor of increasing taxes right now when we have so many other things we could be doing with the existing resources we have.
So I agree with both of those statements. But I do fully agree that we need to sit down as a council and have a, you know, some workshops on this. What are we going to do? What do we want to achieve? And then at, once we develop a plan of what we want to do, then we take a look and see, do we have the resources, do we not? And at that point in time, we have that conversation.
Just to, for clarity, councillor Mavajee, I know you've been on Echo. Wasn't that, isn't that one of the tasks of Echo, is to look for the gaps in the system, and then bring it back to the individual legislative body and staff to determine how to, how to address that? So the first part, I think I've heard three say, "Not now" on the tax. And all, what I'm going to do, I'm not going to delete this off here, I'm going to write that down on this date, because this is a direction from council. So in six months, if we forget what was discussed, it'll be documented here. So no on the tax right now. What about the further discussion about gaps, plans, tools? What is council's desire? Work through Echo, or have your own independent discussion?
You can add me, Kathleen, to the "No, not right now" list.
I feel strongly that we need to accelerate identification of the gaps, what existing tools, resources we have to meet those gaps, and then look at whether or not there's gaps in funding, and make those decisions at that time. But we, we need to move forward with identifying the gaps, and if, whether or not we have the resources to fill that gap. And we need to put a timeline on that, so that we're not here three years from now saying, "Oh, well, we don't have a plan."
I agree conceptually with exactly what you're saying. As far as who should do this for council and with council, I think it should come from Echo.
I would, I would agree with that.
We just really need to take advantage of their expertise, their incredible involvement with the topic. In a way, it's, it's kind of like with DEEP, you know, they've got an expertise, we need to listen. With homelessness, wow, there are really complex issues that we can learn from their involvement at so many levels. So I'd, I'd like to see that as a part of what comes forward, is a designation that Echo has a key role in the presentation.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, councillor.
You know, I do agree that, that Echo is a big part of this. My concern is with how slowly things move on Echo. I follow those meetings, and things move very, very slowly. So I agree with some of the things that councillor Marshall said, that we need to speed things up. And I think with us getting directly involved with that, that would help facilitate that speed adjustment.
Speed's a relative thing. I don't know of any process that's fast. I mean, I, I'm not sure, Glenn, what you're comparing it to.
Okay, so I've heard, I think I've heard three supportive of Echo, or I've only heard Chair Bowerman, councillor Marshall, councillor Mavajee. Are you supportive of bringing this back to Echo? I just need the direction, if we're going through Echo, or if the council's going to do their own independent.
I'm, I am satisfied with the discussions that's happening with the cities and other stakeholders in Echo, including our community, Southwest Washington. You know, we have all the stakeholders primarily based on who has the resources and the, and the issues. I think that's a good think tank for bringing issues back to the respective legislative bodies, whether it's the city or the county, or if we need to, to go back to our legislative delegation and say, "Hey, here's what we see as a gap." I don't, you know, everyone's dissatisfied when you, I mean, just, you don't have to go far from this building to look on Mill Plain, or over by the share house. I mean, there's still a lot of homeless encampments here that look a lot like Portland. No one likes that. That's our report card. And I, and I'm not going to say we're doing the best that we can, because I think we, we can do better. And we are striving to identify what we can do better, and where we need to put our finger. I'm hoping that, you know, law and justice, we have that discussion, because law enforcement's a part of this. You know, ultimately, we offer, and the reality, and I'm sorry it's counter, counter to some narratives, but the reality is, we offer shelter space, we offer drug treatment and sobering services, we offer mental health services, and there are people that just give us the hand and say, "We don't want it." And I've gotten complaints, and I've seen it firsthand. I was just talking to some homeless people in our, under our pavilion yesterday, as the remainers were using drugs. You know, so the, the false narrative is that we're not doing things. We are. The positive narrative is that people are refusing services, and then it becomes a law enforcement issue. And I'm a rule of law kind of guy, and I'd like to see more active enforcement. We're not going to criminalize homelessness, we're going to criminalize crime, from vandalism to arson, to open drug use, to defecating on our building. I mean, that's a component of... So, yeah, if things happening fast enough, no. But we're, we're addressing these issues, and I can see your hand on the button, Amber. I'm hoping that we have some positive discussion in law and justice tomorrow morning on this very issue.
And I did also put, it's on our next item on here, but I put on here by the, on the 21st, you'll see a draft policy ordinance and the fencing alternative discussion, discussion follow-up.
I would just add one thing for Echo. I think it being so large, I think it is just, the think tank is great, and taking a chunk of whether it's the homeless action plan, or looking how it ties to the law and justice side of things, and how that combines together. So then we have action items coming out of that committee, because everyone is at the table, and all the partners are there to have that discussion, whether it be from treatment, crisis, all those pieces, and bringing those together. So I think we can definitely add that to Echo, to support this, this piece as well.
Yeah, I still am back at, let's identify the gaps, and if there, if we have enough resources to, to meet those gaps, and if we don't, let's look to find some additional resources to fill those gaps. And if Echo may be doing wonderful work, but if that's not the focus of what they're working on, we need, I would say we need other vehicles to figure, figure that out. So that, again, we're not here three years from now wondering what our plan is. And, you know, the other thing, as I see countywide affordability there, is Echo, they're not really dealing with housing affordability, or are they? They're not. Because that's really, that's the pipeline to homelessness, is people are just being priced out of their shelter. So they go hand in hand.
So the simple answer is yes, we're, we're not dealing with affordability, because, and, and from my point of view, I mean, we hear from it, from the council for the homeless, it's the national narrative. When the Columbian did their symposium, yeah, it's all about homing, housing affordability. You know, that's not necessarily true. It is about drug use. It is about mental health care, and some of that has to be involuntary. I mean, that is, those are the, the issues with our visible encampments. Yes, housing affordability is a driving force. Having rents so high is a driving force. But, but eliminating encampments and providing humane care that brings people out of that homeless, that homeless situation because of drugs and mental health, that's where, you know, that's where I would like to emphasize our resources. And, and again, some of that gets right, where the rubber meets the road is law enforcement. You know, we just had the ribbon cutting at the Triage Centre. You know, that, that's involuntary treatment, to get people detoxed, sober, and then what do they need? Is it mental health? Is it addiction? Is it both? You know, what are the treatments they need to make, to return them back to productive society? You know, that's our visible report card out there. So, yeah, housing affordability, that's a, that's a strategic issue. It's a big issue, and it's one we're spending a lot of money on for our consultant to come up with, what are our tools? We've worked with the Vancouver Housing Authority, the Housing Solutions LLC, you know, and again, that comes to us, you know, what can we do specifically to help you build affordable housing? You know, that, it's, again, taxes, just increasing taxes is not necessarily the answer. So that may be a philosophical difference between political leanings, but I think we can do a lot more with the resources we already have.
Yeah, I guess I don't see it as an either or. We really need to address both affordability and homelessness. And I, I don't have any criticisms of Echo. I know it's very complex, and they're just doing everything they can to meet a very complex issue. So I agree with everything that you say, but I think we need to approach things with both. And if there is to make any argument for increased taxes, we got to, we got to have that information, which I'm not sure that we have, to make a, a reasonable decision.
I was just going to add too, I, I agree. I think it's all of the above, and I think we have to tackle all those issues. I don't think anybody knows for sure. I know there's a lot of attempt to understand, and there's a lot of kind of rhetoric around both sides of this. But I think the reality is, we really don't know, and I know it's bull's, that we have people that are becoming homeless because of affordability, and then within a certain period of time, the way they cope with that homelessness is drugs, and then mental health challenges come. And then there are also people that have drug abuse issues and/or mental health illness that is not dealt with, and they become homeless because of it. So it really is, we have to address all of it. And, and you're right, they're totally kind of separate issues, but they are intertwined. And so without working and solving one of them, if, basically, if we work on all of them but one, we're still going to fail. So it takes really addressing all those issues.
So for the path forward, I still have three no's on the tax at this time. The other question still remains, identifying gaps. I've heard three support that, but do you want that to go through Echo? Which I think is what was the initial purpose of Echo, was to talk about the system and identify gaps to bring back to the local jurisdictions? Or do you want to do that as a council bringing in our staff?
Kathleen?
I am.
That was four, four no's.
I'm sorry, councillor Belkot?
I was the fourth no.
No on which part?
Taxes, on the new tax.
Okay. What, what about the identifying gaps? Would you like that to continue through Echo, or have that come back county-specific?
Echo, go through Echo.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of that as well. So I would ask Kristin just to, we'll add that to the agenda right now.
How many are favoring going through Echo? Council Belkot, myself? Council Medveji, are you included?
I believe we have a consensus on going through Echo. I just would like to say that I felt a good process would be council touching it with direction to Echo to work things through that we would like them to.
Right. I think that's fine, but I think what may get left out is affordability. And maybe the avenue to approach that is our housing option, the group that's working on that. I don't know if they're going to be continuing, but I think maybe that's our best avenue at this point is to work through the group that's working on affordability. And there's some staff involved with that, I assume. So I think maybe it's a two-pronged effort.
So Sue, I think the part you're missing is we hired a consultant. They've already come back to us. The council has already given them direction. And our community development on those very issues, it's ongoing. We're doing it and we're doing everything. Are we doing it the best we can? That's an ongoing process that we're, but so I don't know what more we can do. How much was that consultant? I mean, I don't like spending consultant money on consultants, but we did. The council loaded on it last year or two years ago. And then we got the work session, they came back and then Oliver presented it and said, hey, what do you want to pursue? And we voted on it. And so we're doing it. I mean, we're heading in that direction.
I can certainly touch base with Oliver because, you know, if he's hearing things. Because I think the council approved like the first phase, the low hanging fruit for them to do. And I believe they're going to come back for further direction. But I'll follow up with Oliver.
That sounds fine. But then the other thing, since you mentioned Oliver, it makes me think of the comp plan update because more will be required of us to address and plan for all the income levels so that there's affordability for all of them. So it's going to be, we will be needing to address it and maybe it comes through Oliver and the cities as well because they'll be required to address it.
So what, because a lot of this happened before this council was reconstituted in January, maybe we should have an update on where community development is, what we're working on now, what the next steps are. So this council has more visibility and more.
We can do that.
Influence.
And I can, we can do it, I can do two parts. One is doing a summary email with all the key points with links to all the prior discussions. And then I can certainly put community planning on a council time agenda just to give a 10-minute update.
I'd be supportive of that.
Right, and at some point, I imagine we're going to be briefed on how exactly we're going to meet those housing requirements with the comp plan.
Yeah, you have lots of decisions with the comp plan coming. Okay, so we'll do Echo, no tax, keep it on here though, just, and I'll just document this discussion on this tracking sheet for that and follow up with Oliver on the affordable housing project.
Right, and identifying the gaps.
Yes, and that would be Echo's. So I would say Kristin, as you're working on agenda items for Council Medveji.
That point, I think that the consultant and Oliver's team is looking for gaps. I mean, that's part of the ongoing process. Hopefully we'll get further educated as where we're in the process in working with our consultant, who hopefully is a good consultant and providing us all the solutions and identifying the gaps that they see.
I've been watching all these meetings. They are, they're a good, it was a good pick. Whoever picked them, great job.
Any other questions on this one? We can move forward.
Good, let's move.
Okay, so already touched on the next one, which is the homeless encampment policy. And this is also tied to the fencing and the last discussion about what are other alternatives. So the draft policy ordinance and the fencing alternatives discussion will be on the June 21st council time agenda.
What was on June 21st? I'm sorry.
The draft policy and ordinance for encampments.
Okay, thank you.
And the fencing alternatives. The next one is just the comprehensive plan updates. You've already completed the public participation plan. We had information sessions and the 20-year population projection. The next step is employment projections 2025. The work session is scheduled right now in July with a public hearing a week later. And then I just listed the rest of the main milestones that council is going to have to address as we move through this year. Wildfire, I call the wildfire issue. This was a request from Council Medveji and supported by the council to add code language that would give property owners their right to cut trees, trim trees, bushes, and for emergency response. This has been drafted already and is with legal being reviewed. I put on here that we will have this also on the agenda for June 21. And I don't, one of the main questions I have for legal, I think it's a pretty simple ordinance, but one of the questions is where does it fit within our code? There's two spots that it could fit in, whether it's, I don't remember if it was general or fire or emergency or whatever. So that, you know, that placement is a question I have as well, but that will be before council on June 21. ADUs, per the last discussion, Council Young, this was an item that you had brought up and then you wanted to put it on hold at that time. Is that still correct?
Yes, now, part of this is being addressed already. I don't think, I don't think they're addressing fees, but from my understanding, I did have a discussion with Oliver that they are working on like shelf pre-approved plans. So I definitely would want to keep this in here, but I'll wait to see what staff's recommendation is.
Okay, and I don't think that this was discussed with council. I think this was part of the list from Lindsay. So I don't know if the council even knows what the totality of this, of what you're waiting for.
What I'm waiting for.
Yeah, what you're envisioning with this program. Because the council's never discussed this. It was just.
Sure, I think this, I did bring it up, but essentially what I'm looking at is this ADUs are a really good way for creating some affordable housing. It's also a tool for many other things, one, being able to age in place. Individuals with set incomes, they're able to use this as a tool to create some extra income that'll offset some of the increased costs that they're experiencing. So anyway, ADUs have a lot of benefits to the community. And I just want to take a look at how we can potentially reduce fees that are associated with it. And then pre-approved plans are a huge saving for the construction of it, where they can go into the community development, apply for permit, but they can use plans that the county has available to them already. So they don't have to go through any of the engineering. They don't have to go through any of the design process with the exception of just a site plan. And so the entire process, because of, you know, the building of it's already been pre-approved by the county, it gets it through way quicker. It's just a lot of, a lot of good things that come from that.
I recall this conversation and Oliver responding that he's working with Wolf Industries and particularly a private firm that does manufactured housing, tiny homes. So, yeah, I think this is a good one to keep our eyes on and I think it's in progress.
So just to clarify, we're not doing any work on this. We're not working on fees or anything like that. So I want to make sure that you're not anticipating any further direction at this time from staff.
No, I would say let's, I mean, keep it on there, but no further.
On hold.
Yeah, we'll see what comes up through the housing options before we come back to that.
Any other, Council Medveji, do you have a question on that one? You're about ready to hit your bump, hit your button. Yeah, we're going to keep going, sorry. A question, we haven't heard anything from, I was told at one point that nothing had changed, nothing had to change. We haven't received any complaints, but we're still going through documentation just to see that endpoint so that it can be provided to council in case there's questions from community members. The freight rail dependent uses. So we did have the work session on May 17th and there were three steps that the council directed staff. The first one, legal reviewing the law and will identify potential legal issues that could result in possible amendments that would go back to the legislature for their consideration to help provide the clarity. I would anticipate, but we'll certainly have this discussion with council after legal is done. That maybe you want to invite our local delegation at some point and then they could help either get their feedback on it as well and maybe have them champion this up in Olympia.
I would not be supportive of changing the legislation.
Okay, well, this was a direction from council was to look at the legislation and identify things that might be a risk because it's not clear. And then bring that back to council to see if you want to change the language. So that was the direction from the majority of the council at that time. The second one, community planning is reviewing and updating the options that were presented. I believe it was on slide seven and particularly slide four. So they are actively working on that. And then the third one is reviewing how schools obtain sewer. So those were the three direction items from council after that work session. The ag commission, I'll have to turn this over to Amber because I don't have the next date and steps.
So we've been reviewing the different committees, commissions to look at overlap, what each of them does. And so we are prepared to come, I think the 28th will be the best date for, to come back with the, we have a lot on that date, but if we need to push it out a week, we can. But to come back and look at the differences. I know Ken and I had a lovely meeting on Monday offsite at a flower farm up near 179th to discuss a couple of things with the 179th corridor, with the community up there. And, you know, we did ask like, what's the representation? What would you look at? And I know that they, a lot of them feel that some of our commissions are limited to what they're doing and that something would be broader for the ag community that's up above 179th and east. So there'll be more to come on that when we bring that back in front of council for consideration.
Just a point of information, the health department is also looking at this. So just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
But I think it was from an epidemiology standpoint with the grant that they just received, right? Council Marshall, I haven't asked Dr. Melnick yet, but that's what I was told on Monday.
Yes, and, but they were also looking at ag commission.
Okay, perfect.
Both in the state and out of the state. So there's some additional information that might be generated.
And that to Dr. Melnick, thank you.
Okay, and as you guys can see, there's red font, so that's what's been added. So these ones that you're looking at right now have been added since the work session that we had or the retreat. So these are the policy items that were added. The next one on wineries and rural centers, there was a council time meeting on May 10th. And the general direction from council was to create an advisory group with farmers and focus on small farms. And then that will be brought back to council. Dark skies, this was also discussed on May 10th. Per council's direction, they did go back to DEEB and ask for their input. DEEB was not supportive of including this in development code and thought it should be in a nuisance code. And this was all shared on May 10th. Most of the other jurisdictions, this type of code is in the development code. Council did give direction to look at simple focused language and bring it back to council. And April is solidifying that now.
I think we were also interested in it being in the code.
Yes, it's the simple focused language in the code, for code, yes. Noise ordinance, again, this is the one, it was brought up last year. The sheriff was, at the time, was not willing to enforce. The current sheriff said that they would be enforcing, it would just be a citation. He did want to make it clear that he's not the one asking for the change in code, but he's supportive of it. Since it is the sheriff's office code, it does have to come from the sheriff's office. But, you know, we talked about this with council as well. April is actually working with the sheriff's office to his system and updating that code language. She has reached out a few times and hasn't had a response yet. So I will, I'll follow up with the sheriff specifically as well.
I do have a constituent I met with who raised this issue. So if I could get them looped in, because I believe they had some specific.
Yes, and he has shared it last year and this year. Yes, I think it's similar to Vancouver's code and adding, part of it was adding the word like hooting. But we can, you can, yeah, we'll make sure that we have that. The development notice code, this was expanding the notice from 300 feet to 500 feet in the urban area and 500 to 1,000 in the rural area. April's also looking at adding a minimum number of residents. That would be impacted. This is going to be included, I would typo, in the biannual code update. And the draft list is just now being formalized and the work session should be coming before council for the biannual code update within the next couple of weeks. Camp Bonneville, I'm going to turn this over to Amber because I don't have all the latest information.
So on the CAG group, the Citizens Action Group, the memo was sent to the county manager's office for review and we'll be giving that to council for the members. As you can remember, I think Council Medveji, the interviews were conducted last year. There was some question whether we could have nine folks versus seven. There's nothing in the rules that says that we can't. So we're opting to put all nine members of the community, the local community on that group for review. So as soon as we get that back, the team will work, move forward to getting that group started. And that is for reviewing the documentation for the cleanup and making sure that it's meeting all the requirements. So that's the first part.
And can you identify what CAG stands for?
Citizen Advisory Group?
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that was, that's a different term then.
So, and then on the, just because I had to educate myself on this, on the website, there's the past presentations where council had decided to go from two groups to one group and the citizen advisory group and then it's two, I know, Council Medveji. The citizen advisory group is looking at the documentation and then all the past pieces. So just so that you're aware, because I had to do some research on that myself because it wasn't clear that we, how we went from two to one. So do you want to add anything to that?
I had a straight question regarding this because of all the emails we constantly see about the UXO being found beyond Camp Bonneville, all over Camp Bonneville. And I'm sure everyone's gotten a tour at least by now. You know, there's UXO and then there's just debris. And so, and I haven't seen any differentiation or answer to the friends of Camp Bonneville or whatever the organization's called, about what's actually being found or had been found. Because most of what had been found, other than in the central impact area, was inert, what we call training rounds, which are everywhere in the, at every camp and base in the Army because they use training rounds. They're inert. They are not dangerous. They do not explode, ever. They weren't designed to be that way. And so, but I never saw any differentiation between what was found in the different areas of Camp Bonneville saying, yeah, these are all training rounds. These are all inert. Yeah, we found one in a Douglas fir or laying on the ground and it was a training round. You know, no danger. Yeah, we picked it up, we disposed of it. But it's just plain and simply debris. It's not a high explosive. It's nothing that the public needs to worry about. Has there been any focus on these, on the documentation, on differentiation? Because I've never heard it mentioned.
So, Council, I would say that I would recommend that Eric Harrison, who's in charge of Camp Bonneville for the parks, come and give a presentation. I think it's been, especially within council being new, I think it would be good to. I know we do those shorts, you know, when everyone comes out and visits, we do the history and kind of where we're at with the cleanup. And we've had Department of Ecology out. And so I think that we need to, I think it'd be good to hear an update about what we've done in the first three phases, what was left to do in the last phase, and then kind of what the future kind of looks like for right now. And that kind of goes into the second part of this update that we have with the firing range. Do you want me to continue with the firing range? Okay, so May 25th and Council Belkot joined me out for the tour with the deputy director, Will, for the CJTC, which is the training center as the Southwest Regional. As we all know that we have that identified. So we toured the facility and he looked at usability for the firing range portion of the training for that. So we toured the facility and he looked at usability for the firing range portion of the training for that. And so as Kathleen's listed, all these agreements, all that marries in together. So if we are going to have the training center shoot the firearms out there, it needs to be in conjunction and also looking at how that impacts the community. And so what I mean by that is looking at how many days the sheriff's office uses it, how many days the jail uses it, then how many days the FBI uses it, and then how many days the training center is going to need to use it per year. So we will be marrying all four of those agreements once we get deputy director Will's numbers from what they are going to be potentially using that. And also too, they have some expertise in kind of coexisting with firing ranges that they're using throughout the state of how they coexist. So there's some potential improvements we could make to the firing range, like put a little bit of a cover over it to lessen the sound using suppression. So there's some various things that we can do to lessen the impact to the community out there. But the four agreements will need to be married together, meaning that the days will be, need to be lessened for some of the departments potentially, so we can fit in the training center days that are out there. So those are, will be coming, those will be finished here in the next, I would say, the next couple of weeks. Once we get the, they're going to want to move quickly on the training center, as you've seen from Sheriff Horch.
Really quickly on that, thank you for bringing that up, because that was something I was wondering about for quite a while after the tour. But one of the things that I'm curious about is, from my understanding, we don't really have a full plan yet for what we foresee happening at Camp Bonneville. And I think that the firing range is an excellent asset, but I don't know if it's going to be compatible with what our long-term vision is. So in terms of, you know, updates and spending on that, are we, I mean, are we just kind of looking at it and just kind of making initial assessments? Or are we actually working on spending, you know, or initiating any of these things?
Good question, Council. I think initial assessments, I think whatever we decide to put in, you, the council's going to need to give that direction of like, this is an investment we're willing to make, because the training center is going to be here for X amount of years. I think what's really important to the community up there, when I've talked to different community members, is that we don't go into super long-term agreements with folks. That's their wish. So that if in 10 years, we decide, the council decides to use it for X purpose after the cleanup's done, then we can do that. So I think that's the piece, as we're looking at how we can do this in smaller increments. But again, before we spend money out there, we'll be, we would be coming forward.
Great, and when you do bring that forward, please kind of bring a, you know, an overall overarching plan of where we are at timing wise with everything with Camp Bonneville and, you know, how much the expenses would be and how we can recoup that, you know, those kinds of things. So I appreciate that information.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Amber, when you chatted with the state in May, are they looking at this as the permanent training academy facility or location or just temporary until they find a permanent?
I don't think that's determined yet, because I think the temporary, as Sheriff Horch and Chief Maury and some of the other city chiefs have been looking for temporary classroom space. So they've been looking at Clark College on the east side and various other things to get this going at the end of the year. I don't know the answer to that, Kathleen. I think if they were able to build, they may build an indoor. So I think to, that that might be, yet to be determined, but it would definitely be in the next year.
My understanding of the discussion so far is one, we're going to open this school as quickly as we can with existing school classrooms. Camp Bonneville is not favored by any partner because they want something closer to I-5. But Camp Bonneville is a ready place for range access. That may be the permanent solution for the academies to have the range there, whether it's indoor, out there, or a combination of both. So I, no one really is favoring, as far as I know, building an academy out there. I don't think that conversation has ever taken hold with anyone in Southwest Washington. You know, the sheriff and Chief Maury particularly, and some of the other chiefs that have been actively participating, really have been looking for something right along the corridor of I-5.
Yeah, I've heard as well. And just, and I know Amber touched on this, so when you have, when you have the item one and item two, item one is really about the short and long-term plans overall for Camp Bonneville. We, the council had selected a community advisory group to look at options. And then we had to take the step back to change that group, to look at what have we done already to ensure we haven't missed a step before we look at what council wants to do with that property long-term. So the second phase of that is the options. So staff is not assuming anything on what's going to happen out there. That's really going to be council-driven. And then we have the supplemental part on the items two that Amber's been talking about with the firing ranges.
I just want to add one point, because, I mean, I was always hoping and envisioning this equestrian center and equestrian riding trails and hiking trails separated. Bicycles become a problem with horses. They're compatible with ranges. You just talk to the Texas Rangers, they, they work horses around gunfire all the time. But one point, and you've probably been out there and seen it, we have elk herds. And I will tell you that in places I've been around the world where there was extensive mining and de-mining, some countries use herds. Sheep, goats to kind of test areas. I mean, as awful as that sounds, we have elk herds out at Camp Bonneville. I haven't heard of a single detonation ever caused by something coming to the surface or, or an elk herd touching off an ordinance. I just would point that out. It's probably a lot safer than some people are making it out to be.
Any other questions on this item? So we can keep moving, okay. Legislative session, that's done. As you guys know, the lobbyist does want to have a discussion with me regarding any desires for council with communication with them moving forward. So I will be getting that feedback from you and our 101s, just if you have any feedback on that. Rural broadband, the first item is the ARPA fund grant for Comcast. So the contract dropped. I did get a response back last night from legal, so that will be sent back to Comcast and hopefully we can get this solidified within a month, just for timing purposes. And I'll let Amber talk about the second item.
Okay, so we, our broadband action team is getting ready to submit our state proposal to Washington State University on June 14th. But we received 600 residential responses in the rural area to our survey that went out, so we had really good response. We also sent 197 surveys to community anchors, so libraries, hospitals, schools, ISP providers in the area, and then digital equity asset inventory. So that overlaps a little bit with the community anchors that we have in our community. So we had decent responses to that as well. So I bring up the survey piece. We've had really great maps come in from the state as the FCC has provided and then the state's consultant has looked at the overlay with the maps. Our phenomenal GIS team has taken the map, taken the data that we've received from the residential surveys as well as the anchors and layered that in if there was any missing pieces, saying that there was not infrastructure in that particular area. So we will be submitting all that. Our executive summary is being worked on this week and we're almost done and we're going to be ready to submit. So the team has done phenomenal work on that. So I'd love to bring the whole presentation and show council what the workbook and all the pieces that we did with the mapping. And then whenever Kathleen determines a good date for us to bring that back. But we are on market and we're going to be ready to submit and will be eligible for looking at our infrastructure and the digital equity piece on that.
I want to personally thank you and your team. I think you are, you had a little catching up to do, but you did that and with the gap after Lindsay left particularly. So great work. But I want to raise a parallel issue that gets back to what Glenn raised with ADUs and permits. From time to time, the council has said this, we want to reduce code. You know, we, we want to look for code that's, we really don't have to have in place. We really never did that. But maybe it comes up from time to time. And we looked at specifically drilling down into permits. Okay, what are the minimum steps? Because we want generally, and we voted on this, cost reimbursement. You know, whatever services we're providing out to the community, we should be, you know, cost reimbursed. We're not here to make money, but we're not here to lose money. We need, we need to be sustainable. But, and we've raised the issue on permitting particularly, do we need engineers? If we have an engineer stamp, why do we have another engineer look at it and take the time and the money to do that? Drilling down further, the ADUs, broadband. You know, from the very beginning, working with Public Works, okay, we're going to prioritize these permits to get this cable in the ground. We're going to dig once, if we can. We're going to notify all the providers when we're digging up an easement, so they can get their cable in the ground. And I was surprised that some of the entrepreneurs out there, some of the service providers weren't on the list. They didn't know when we were digging once, you know, so they could take the opportunity to get their cable in the ground. So there are internal things we can do as a county outside of these grants that we hope to capture. And so where, where we're still treading water and we're disappointed is in that policy decision that the county makes. Okay, from Public Works, okay, what are the minimum things we need to do to ensure we have safe emplacement of cable? What's the minimum? And the basic answer we got back was, well, you know, we have all of these reviews we have to do. And we're not even really capturing the full cost. Okay, well, if you accept that answer, and I kind of do, because I'm not an engineer. I mean, I want safe emplacement wherever we work along our easements. But we've also had examples where all those steps are in place, but we still had to dig up and replace the underground because there was a collapse and it wasn't done properly. And, but the flip side of that is, okay, if we necked it down and we, we really are only doing those checks that we have to do for a private vendor to put something in the ground, do we want to take the next step? Do we want to subsidize it because it's something we really favor? Because it impacts economic development? It impacts quality of life? It ensures that people can work from home? It ensures that students can work from home? It's an equity issue out in the rural community to have access to high-speed internet, to broadband? Do we want to, is it so important that we want to subsidize? And when we looked at our fund balances very recently, I saw that, okay, well, there's a difference between our fund balance and our projected forecast balances. So we could, if we wanted, to vote and say, yeah, we're going to subsidize this, so it does pencil out for Noctil and other businesses to put the cable in the ground. So I, it's not up here. As far as I know, it's, it's just been left to languish. Noctil's still waiting on an answer on, and I know our direct, Ken is working allegedly directly with Noctil on their specific projects. But that's really not the answer. The answer is for all broadband, not just for this one vendor. And as far as I know, there's been no progress made in the east county on making it pencil out for these small vendors to get the cable in the ground. So I just want to tee that up, because I think it gets to our policy decisions and how we implement them. Because I would be in favor, if we can sustain it for all those who are similarly situated, let's reduce the cost per foot or the cost per mile, so we can get this one service distributed, especially in the rural county where it gets pretty costly. Anyway, tee that up, because I, I think it's just kind of out there and we're not making any progress as far as I know.
So I, I agree with that. You know, if it's, if it's something that we as a council want to accomplish and we as a county want to accomplish and it benefits the public, but it's not happening on its own, I think we owe to look into the barriers that are preventing it from happening. So I would be supportive of looking into this, for sure, and finding out, is that price per foot or price per mile or whatever, is that something that's, that's preventing the installation? And if it is, I'm supportive of looking at potentially reducing or possibly even eliminating our cost recovery on that particular thing, or looking at other ways to recover, so that we can boost that, that availability to people that are in the more rural areas.
I would support that as well. I think we need more information about what those barriers, all those barriers might be and what the price tag might be. But if there's a barrier, let's try to figure out a way around that. But I just want to say, really very good work. I know you've been, Amber, working under, and your team, working under a tight deadline. So thanks very much for all your work on that front. And one thing I've been interested in, and I've mentioned it to you, is if there's an opportunity to have, you know, a community meeting out in the rural area to talk about this, what's coming, what their, what their people's concerns might be, just to have a dialogue with the community that will very much benefit from, from this broadband.
Council Marshall, thank you for bringing that up. In our meeting on Monday night, Ken and I talked about the outreach that we've done with 179th and the lack of having it out in the community during COVID and all those things where we're restricted. But how can we do better? And part of our conversation on Monday was even the broadband came up, is how do we impact the communities up here? How do we hold these small town halls that people can come in and how do we have those conversations? So I absolutely would welcome our, working on that together and how we can, we can do a better job with the outreach up north.
Great, thank you.
I would ask on the costing case, if it's acceptable, the council, we can bring back what our current code says with the cost, because that is part of that driven, what the other jurisdiction costs, our industry standards and our fund balance, so that the council can see what the implications could be onto the fund balance moving forward. And then we can get direction. Does that work?
Perfect. And Lindsay had done some work on the costing comparison, and we were kind of right in the middle, I would just say generally. I mean, there were some that underwrite it, there are some that are a lot less expensive and there's some that are more expensive. We were kind of smack in the middle.
Any other questions on that one, or can I keep moving forward? Okay. Mental health sales tax advisory, so the team has started to meet, the RFP process is underway, I believe, tomorrow. The final review of the internal and external applications is going to happen with that team. And then I anticipate council, who's on the team, can bring an update to, to the full council during council updates. But any recommendations, again, that come through this process will be presented during the annual budget process as well for final consideration from the council. Public safety sales tax, we talked about that earlier today. I will ask, Council Belkot, would you like to be on that committee? It's similar to mental health sales tax, so it's a committee of diverse stakeholders within the county to accept proposals from county departments and then be part of that process of evaluating and recommending to the full council opportunities for that funding to be spent internally. We do have Council Mepidji on there right now? Okay, so we will add you to that committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rules of procedure, I just put it on there, that's already done. Council vacancy policy is done. Clark County Code 2.04, this is regarding the regular meeting days that we need to update to ensure we're in compliance or match the rules of procedure in the charter. I am hoping to have a draft to council in July, just again, trying to spread this out, so we're not hitting everything in the latter part of this month. Public defense, Amber will be doing a work session on June 23rd, 21st, 20, oh, I changed that, it's not June 19th. What is, is it the 21st? Is that the Wednesday? 21st, yep. Thank you. You're welcome. Charter amendment, I just want to clarify, I know Council Mepidji, but you and I had chatted originally. You had brought up about the possibility of adding FTE, adding a review of the charter amendments or getting feedback from the council and the county manager, and also maybe looking at the timeline on the, how often they review for amendments. So I think after our discussion, it was narrowed down to the review, making sure the council and the county manager had review. But I wanted to confirm that and make sure the full council or the majority is supportive. This would have to go on a November election. There is some cost, I don't know what the cost is and I can find that out. But the resolution, the explanatory statements, the committees to write the for and against, has to be submitted to the elections office by August 1st. So we'll have to get started on this fairly soon, so we can hit that deadline.
The only thing I'd add to this, I had a very brief conversation with Greg Kimsey, because I brought it up with him. And he, he has some additional ideas he would like to pursue as well. So I'm hoping to... So I'm hoping to meet again with him and see exactly what he's talking about and, because we're going to fast run out of time, the way this always plays out. So anyway, I just, if there's any other ideas or concerns.
So, go ahead. I'd just like some clarification. So what's being proposed now is to add the council and the county manager just in a review capacity for?
Any charter.
Any changes?
Yeah, so the charter, or not even any changes, but the Charter Review Commission, from my understanding, would reach out or have a separate dialogue with the council and county manager to provide input on what's working and not working? And then maybe also including any suggested amendments that they're going to put out there.
Right, we would give input to that. It would be a two-way street.
So let me add some further clarification. And I sent basically in an email to Leslie, and I think that went out to all the councillors, my initial idea, which really captures the one amendment. There was a potential for a second one. But it was, it was more than, it's to set how they go about their task, number one. Because they flailed around for about seven months and then came up with their own agenda that had nothing to do with improving the charter, from my point of view. Because they never talked to the county manager. They never talked to any single elected official. And so that's, it would direct them, that once they get constituted, that's their first order of business, is to have public testimony by each of the elected on what charter amendments could be, or what could be pursued to improve our charter, to kind of start them on the right path on things that are relevant. So that's essentially what this charter amendment would do. The other portion of it that's very related is to close a loophole. Because right now they have, and by PA advice, because there was, you know, their business was to terminate the 31st of December, yet that was interpreted that they could put amendments out into the future, instead of having a one-year cycle. And then by charter amendment, they've shortened it, I think from 10 to five years. So they literally could be putting amendments on almost every year because of this loophole. So it was to close that, that, okay, you're going to, here's how you start, here's what you work on, here's when your business is over, and you get one shot at an election cycle, not multiple years.
Could that be sent out again if you had specific language? Because I'd like to look at the specific language. As it's described, it sounds reasonable, but I'd like to look at the.
Yeah, I have the email as well and I can forward it. And then what I will do, just because the timeline does come quickly, not next week because I'm out of town, but the following week, I will have draft language for council in the draft form to try to start getting that solidified so we can hit all the other deadlines. But we'll forward that email to you.
Yeah, I'd just say, I'd look forward to seeing exactly what your thoughts are on that, just as far as, because we don't need to take up this meeting time for, but, I mean, any elected official could have gone and publicly testified.
No, they were never, at one point, about seven months in, they asked for three-minute comments from the elected. That was the first and only opportunity. And I don't know of any single elected official that did it because, one, they already had all their agenda pretty much already worked out and they had already frayed away the first half year of the commission. So, and the county manager was on just about every meeting. No one ever even asked her, what do you think about this? What are your ideas? So they did not ask for input from those that are actually doing the job.
So there was no public testimony allowed? I was not involved in that.
There was public testimony every week. And there, and as Councilor Mavigi said, the elected officials were invited to one of the meetings specifically to provide input.
But they could have provided input at any one of the meetings?
Anytime, yes.
Okay.
For three minutes. I mean, that was not only insulting, but it would have been completely ineffective.
I just have one question on the process. If, so when we come up with whatever language or whatever we want to advance, is there a public meeting for the public to give us input onto that or they have to just vote one way or the other once it gets on the ballot?
I don't remember if it requires a hearing, but I would assume the resolution would need to be approved in a public meeting, but not necessarily a public hearing.
Okay, because I think it would be important to get some feedback.
Yes, it'll be on, and then as we're drafting it, it'll be on council time and we also have public comment right now on council time, agenda items as well.
And I think the only nuance is it doesn't take three votes, it takes four votes, correct, for us to put in a charter amendment on?
I'll have to look at the charter to confirm that, but that sounds accurate.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll send out the email that Councilor Mavigi had originally sent and then we'll put this on the agenda in two weeks with some draft language to start that process. Thank you.
Is this our last? Oh, it's not our last.
We have one more. Sorry.
I was going to thank you for putting this all together.
One more.
And wonder if you could send it out electronically.
Yes, and we'll send it out and we will upload it online as well. It's a working document, it's not a final document. So the last item is fire impact fees. So the fire districts did join a work session on May 10th asking for council's approval for fire impact fees. This is under RCW that council can impose. There were not three councillors who supported that moving forward and there was some discussion about a vote, that if the public votes for it, you know, then we might be supportive. So I wanted to chat about, because they're asking me now, what's the next step? You know, who puts out the vote? So there's a couple options for council's consideration. One, there could be a change in direction today and have three councillors support fire impact fees and then that would start that process. The other two options is council putting this out as an advisory vote to get that feedback from the community if they support it. And legal's looking at this as well, because the second one is, the question I have is, can the fire districts also put out their own advisory vote? So it would be one or the other if it can be done. The one thing to keep in mind also, if that's something that council's interested in doing an advisory vote, probably, there's no legal fine that if the vote comes back where the majority of the voters support it, there's still not a legal, so now council, you have to do it. So if that's not going to change the outcome and council, the majority of council is still not going to support fire impact fees, I'd recommend not putting it out for a vote because that might not end well or it might cause some issues. Go ahead, councillor.
So could I just ask a question first and foremost? Because for some reason I didn't pay attention to when we actually had that presentation. I supported it and I guess I was in the minority. Who didn't support it? You said there weren't three votes, so I, but I don't even remember there being a vote. So.
I didn't support it, Councilor Mavigi. And councillor, I'm sorry, Chair Byerman wasn't there.
And I would suggest that at this time, if it is possible for us to reconsider that vote, that we could do that.
So that was the other point. So we only had four councillors, that got past me. So it smacks right into our procedural chains that we can reconsider on a two-two vote. Perfect. Can we do that now? By thumbs up or down?
No, you would need to do that at a regular Tuesday meeting.
They could give direction that we're supportive and then we would bring it back for final action.
That's, that's fine, yes.
So you've already heard me, I'll give my thumbs up. Like, you know, we have a very torturous means of supporting our fire districts. It is how it is. And basically the burden goes on to new development in these impact fees. I think they're appropriate. This go-round, the fire districts really supported the justification for the capital investments they need to make. So I fully support that we avoid all, because there's costs involved in these advisory votes. And I want to say it's like $30,000 to $50,000. And that was from years ago that they, Kimsey quoted that figure. I, anyway, you have my thumbs up.
So I would say that I was one of the ones that's not supportive of the impact fee. However, I would be supportive of bringing it back forward so that we have the full council to deliberate on it fully, knowing that that will probably impact this. And I do think that it would make sense if we have a majority of the council that does support moving forward, even though I'm in the minority potentially, that it would save the community some funding. And that being said, I, that discussion about the votes was, I think, mostly me. They had addressed me and asked me if I would support if there was a community vote and it was positive. And I would, I would go with the way the community, but if we can avoid having to spend some money to get through that process, I'm supportive of that. If the council as a whole with all five available are supportive of moving forward.
I'm always supportive of a citizen vote to set the direction for any kind of additional fees. However, in this case, I'd just like to see the full council have the opportunity for the vote. And it sounds to me like we've got the three willingness to, who are willing to do that.
I would be supportive of it coming back to a council meeting. And would that be, the public would have an opportunity to weigh in on this at that time?
If it's on the agenda, yes. We'll have to work through the logistics if it's a Tuesday meeting and like a staff report, because I think that's what they were kind of looking for during the work session was the general direction. And then we would start the process internally because there's steps with their capital facilities plan. So there's a whole process moving forward. So how, I'm assuming we can't then get the general direction today and then have staff move forward with the process?
Yes, we can do that. If that's, I mean, that's what would have occurred.
Yeah, so that would be like normal, like you give feedback now, staff does all the work, brings it back on a Tuesday meeting for final approval.
Right. Would it be better to, I don't know if it would be better if we'd attract more of an audience if it was an evening meeting or daytime meeting? But I really very much would appreciate the public's input on this decision. And I, and I think we can decide outright as a council. I don't think I would favor it going to each individual fire department to pass because then they all have to pony up that money. But if the direction is that we send it out for an advisory vote and if it came back positive, I would, as a council member, commit to supporting that.
Okay, so I just want, for clarifying purposes, the path forward, am I hearing the majority of the council supporting moving forward with the process to have the impact fee implemented?
I think the question has to be that there's direction to move forward, not necessarily stating whether you agree.
Right, it's direction to move forward in one way or another. Vote or the implementation process? So implementation process, because otherwise I'm not going to go down the other path with staff. So for, is the majority of the council support moving forward with the implementation process for the fire impact fees?
Would that implementation process be coming, it would be coming back before us, public input involved? Yeah, I would be supportive.
Officially approved, I'll get the full process from Oliver and his group because it's, I think it's more complicated process, but there will be steps, yes, that council will make the final vote public, just like we do with any other item that council gives direction on.
I would support that.
So coming back for a vote, that's what we're.
Yeah, but we're going to, yes, but we're going to start.
A point I want to make, one on advisory vote, costs a lot of money and we don't usually do it because it's non-binding and it's just, and you only get whoever participates in voting.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
And it's good, it's good to have public meetings for transparency and making decisions. But, I mean, we're all capable people here to get input and make public decisions. And that's why we have public meetings. You're not going to get a lot of public, look who's here today. I mean, look who, we had a torturous calendar yesterday and we probably had, what, six comments, a dozen comments. We've got over 500,000 people in this community, you know, by having a public meeting, you're not going to get the public to come in and tell you what to do. And that's our job, where we have to make tough decisions. And in the public venue, you either decide yes or no. So I'm not suggesting we go to an advisory vote because we don't, I mean, we didn't even do it on fireworks and that would have been a great one to do it on, or toll links or light rail. I mean, it's just, it's kind of a waste of money.
Yeah, so what I'm, what I'll look at doing, I'll talk to Oliver today just to see if he can do a quick outline of the process and maybe he can share that. And I know Amber will be here next Wednesday as well, but may he can just at least talk to the council to share that process so that starts that public transparency on what steps need to be taken and when it goes before the council. Does that work with everybody?
Yes.
Councilor Belkot, did you have any concerns or questions?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. That is it from my end, unless you all have a policy item that was not listed.
I did have, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, councillor Young. I just wanted to get back to Councilor Mavigi's question about charter amendments. And it is correct pursuant to section 9.6 that it does require four votes to pass a charter amendment.
I did have one thing to bring up policy-wise and I believe we mostly finalized, I mean, we talked about adding, you know, adding meetings and stuff like that to get through the agenda, but I still would like to have a conversation. I mean, yesterday was a perfect example. I still think maybe we should at least switch around consent agenda and public hearings because, I mean, we got an email yesterday from somebody that was here in the hearing room, or not in hearing room, but they were online and then they were waiting, waiting, waiting and they still couldn't participate in the public hearing. And I realize the same thing can happen with consent agenda if you reverse those, but I just, I think the public hearings are more vital decisions that public input should be involved in. And I'd like to see some way that people don't have to sit here for hours waiting for that public hearing to come up.
I'd like to see some way where we don't sit here for hours. I mean, that's the main issue. We've raised this before. I mean, I, every time we make a change on our scheduling or agenda flipping, people get pissed off. I'm not interested in changing things around.
And I would also say that the order of the agenda is in the rules of procedure. So if there's going to be a change to that, we're going to have to go through a public hearing process.
I recall the consent agenda being much shorter and not so complicated because as there's more items and they're more complicated and we want to pull some things off, then that's just a real deal.
So I'm going to take ownership from yesterday because I did a very, very quick cursory review because I was out of town to assign. But usually my filter when I look at them is if there's something that's been pre-approved, it's grant money in and out, it's a routine business, something we do every year, that's usually what I put on consent and then other items on separate. The other thing I'm going to do too, thinking about this last night, is I know the leadership team was told about the additional days and the deadlines. I'm going to have them when they're submitting information to Rebecca and I to actually say, does it have to be on the next agenda or can it wait so that we can start spreading those out a little bit more with the additional meeting?
You know, we haven't even hit the extra meetings yet, so this may flesh out. So just wanted to bring it up that it was a concern that constituent took to us and I hear people's frustration. So hopefully this resolves with the extra meetings that we have. And I think that's a great idea, asking, is it pertinent to be on this one?
Yeah, and, you know, looking at yesterday's calendar, I mean, you spent as much time, if not more, on the public hearings than you did on the, on two public hearings than you did on the separate business items. So, and we did have constituents. So, and we did have constituents that were concerned, that wanted to share their opinion on that as well. So I didn't anticipate it was going to go that long in the afternoon, but I appreciate that you guys are all engaged.
So we do have two executive sessions.
Yeah, so just to close the loop on this, there's not three counselors that support changing the agenda and moving through the rules of procedure.
I withdraw that anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So where do we stand? I think we are finished with policy items, are we not?
Yes, for today.
And you have none and none of the other counselors have no additional ones. This is all good news. So it's time to move to the executive sessions. We have two. One of them is about 10 minutes and the, it is on qualifications of an applicant for public employment according to RCW 42.30.110, paren, one, paren, G. And then we also have pending litigation on RCW 42.30.110, paren, one, paren, little I. And that should be about 10 minutes. So let's say it's 11:31, 11:32 now. Let's say that we will return here at noon exactly. It is Wednesday, June 7, 2023. We are back as a Clark County Council in council time for the purpose of bringing this meeting to a close. We have just returned from two executive sessions that took us about 25 minutes and there is no after action from either of those executive sessions. So our purpose now is simply to say, thank you for being here and this meeting is adjourned.